The meeting of the One County Board of Education will now come to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, the agenda is approved. Will outstanding please as tiny best ladies and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, the consent agenda is approved. Student advisory is not here this afternoon, so they left a report for each of you by your station. And ROTC was supposed to report, but they will be here for the next meeting. Now we'll have reconations from our guest, Mr. Matt Handley is here.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to give you all or to present to you all an award that you have earned as a board of distinction, recognized through TSVA. This is of course your plaque recognizing that, and I've got a couple few words I want to say to you in regard to this. Wishing to spotlight outstanding board performance, the Tennessee School Boards Association created its Board of Distinction program to recognize the highest standards of performance by a board as a whole. This award, one of TSVA's most prestigious, celebrates the achievements of those boards that have met the challenge of leadership in every area of the board's responsibility. To be designated as a board of distinction, the school board must meet specific requirements in four areas: planning, policy, promotion, and board development. These areas include such elements as creating five-year plans, reviewing and maintaining their policy manuals, participating in TSVA district and state meetings, conducting a self-evaluation, and achieving and maintaining necessary boardmanship levels for each member. As the requirements are extensive, not every board qualifies as a board of distinction. Your board is among the select few. On behalf of the Tennessee School Board Association, I am proud to present the Board of Distinction Award to the Warren County Board of Education. Congratulations to each of you.
Thank you.
Yes, we don't have the whole board here though, so I'll use some items.
Let me go very well with what you have.
There you go. I want to get you all right here and we'll have the rest of the board and we'll just clone in the two that are missing.
Don't take anybody else's place.
And I'm going to get in real close. Keep going, keep going, keep going, good, good. Perfect. Here we go, big smiles. One, two, three, and one more. Just to make sure, oh yeah, that's good. One more D's and A's right there. Perfect. Very nice.
Congratulations again.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here, appreciate the chairman and the board spearheading that work and then making sure we got that renewed. We appreciate that. So appreciate Chairman Martin working with us to get that going.
Okay, now I'm going to turn the meeting over to Director Bobby Cox for the operations reporting.
Yeah, we do have one recognition that goes along with the first part of our operation report, so I'll turn it over to Cheryl, Kelly, and Shannon if they'll come up. They have a presentation for the board as well for a healthier Tennessee workplace.
I'm Shannon Riley and I work with Cooley School Health along with Cheryl, and we're really excited to present the Warren County School Central Office with the Governor's Foundation for Health and Wellness Healthier Workplace Recognition. So this was a lot of hard work that was put in here to do health initiatives for nutrition, tobacco, and physical activity for our employees. We're very thankful to Mr. Cox for letting us do these health initiatives.
Yes, thank you for our support.
You're welcome.
And we're hoping to have other schools sign on as well and give this award to, and we want to also encourage everyone to participate so we can be a healthier community as well.
That'd be great. We'll put that on the wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
So appreciate Shannon and Cheryl, they've worked really hard to make that happen. And I think this is, our central office was the first in our system to accomplish that. So really proud of our group here, so appreciate that.
I think we're the first workplace in Warren County.
All right. Well, that's awesome. We appreciate you all working hard on that and coming tonight to present that to the board. So I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the hard work they've put in doing that, so.
So she said they would, they want to get the schools involved, they just start with school all the time, I guess.
I think so.
Yes, we're going to be working with each of the school nurses to go with their pace to do the different initiatives at their schools.
All right. The next item is Tracy. She's going to talk about her STEM trailer.
I prepared a small packet to kind of give you an idea of what is the STEM trailer all about. I'll briefly walk through this and I'll show you a notebook that the company prepared to give you an idea of what's in there. And I've got, made a notebook for every school and I've got a notebook for, okay, thank you, I've got a notebook if to pass around to show you all as well, if you'd like a copy of the notebook, I'm sorry, if you'd like a copy of the notebook, you can do that as well, but I'll pass this around if you want to work as we're talking. In your packet, you can see the company provided us promotional stickers to give to people in the community to promote our STEM on wheels. And the first page of the packet shows you some pictures and you can see, this is the outside of the trailer, and then the inside of the trailer showing you how everything is packed on there. Now the students do not come to the trailer to actually get instruction. This travels around and all of the items that are in the STEM on wheels are rolled off and taken into the school and set up while he is there, okay? The second page is some more items, and I'd like to go through these. It's a compressor, we have a 3D printer. Every school has a 3D printer on site, so that was placed in the science, eighth grade science teacher's classroom, okay? Then the smaller unit here is the mini 3D printers, there are four of those on the trailer that Michael will use to roll off when he wants to do individual printings with sections of students, groups of students, okay? The next picture is a meal. And the final pictures are some pneumatics and some robotics trainers. And then up here at the top says our Vex Robotics. There are so many of those kits, we have enough for 30 students to work with Vex Robotics. The next page in your packet kind of gives you an idea of everything that is on the STEM trailer. So I wanted to provide you a listing of everything as you go through that. If you have any questions at a later date or whatever, email me. And that's what that notebook describes everything that's in there. The company has made a section in that notebook that describes everything. If you look down at number 18 and 19, each school has a Vex robotic elements kit for competition and like a full perimeter and tiles kit. So that is at every school. So they'll be able, eventually if we can get every school a set of five or six Vex Robotics, they can have robotics team hopefully, that's our goal as well. Middle school started robotics team last year, still trying to develop that more and eventually hopefully we can compete, okay? The next page in your packet is just the rest of the schedule for, or the rest of the schedule, excuse me, for the rest of the school year. Since we got a late start and it, we're not going to spend but about two weeks at every school this year, next year on a full year, we're hoping to be able to spend about seven weeks at every school. And he will be teaching to seventh and eighth graders, and I'll show you the curriculum in just a minute. The next page in your packet was when we did our media day on March 9th. We had a lot of visitors come to Centertown, Mr. Dwayne Cheryl came out and did an article and did a video that is on the Southern Standard website if you'd like to view that. This gives you a little bit of idea of what we did that day. And we were lucky enough to have Dr. Daniel Mazera, which was the previous Assistant Commissioner of CTE, and Deborah Knoll, which is a consultant over the STEM programs at the state. They came and visited and they interviewed on that video as well. The last thing in your packet is the curriculum. Mr. Michael Pierce is our teacher, and he is going to teach the STEM Innovators Curriculum to seventh graders and the STEM Designers Curriculum to eighth graders. And hopefully we will be able to get through as much of his curriculum in the seven weeks that he is there on a full year. One more thing before we open up, any questions if you have any? I'm just going to show you a few items that a 3D printer prints. Really, really neat. I'm glad this technology is at every school system or every elementary school. There are all kinds of little things a 3D printer can print. There's a DNA, there's a rocket, different printing mechanisms. So I mean, it's just, it's an awesome piece of technology. Like I said, now every eighth grader in the county will have an opportunity to experience what that's like. Do you all have any questions?
Does it take you a whole day to move to the different schools? I just noticed.
We have only so far done that one time. He started at Centertown, we moved it to Deverol, and it probably will take him a whole day. The time, we scheduled it early enough in the day, so they come and pick it up about right after eight, about eight o'clock. So he misses the school traffic. And it's taken to the other schools and he has to roll everything off and it usually takes about a day. We have 30 laptops, we have, I mean, it's a state-of-the-art opportunity for students.
This was a grant, you want to talk about the grant?
Yes, it was a Perkins Reserve Grant through the Department of Career and Educational Education. And I'm just going to be honest with you, we've been very lucky in Warren County to get the Perkins Reserve Grants. This is about our third or fourth Perkins Reserve Grant. We got the first grant for our mechatronics program of about $295,000. Then we got lucky enough to get the grant to modernize Joyce Britton's program at the middle school. That was a $120,000 grant. And then this grant is a $200,000 grant to cover what you see here plus the salary for the teacher for the first year, full salary, then we prograde it every year for the next two years. And then after three years, it'll be a school system responsibility to pick up the salary. And I'm getting ready to submit another Perkins Reserve Grant hopefully on Monday to get some house science equipment and some culinary equipment. So, do y'all have any questions?
I think we all join in saluting you for being so proactive about applying for the grants. And we've seen the results of that with mechatronics that helped make us the first high school in the whole United States to have its own internal mechatronics program. And you mentioned Dr. Mazera from the State Court of Education. She was highly complimentary of Warren County and this school system for being here again proactive and stepping out, taking the initiative on the STEM subjects. She was just extremely gracious about that and very, very strong. I just did a radio interview last week with Dr. Kingwell from Motlow, the Motlow President, and he said much the same thing. And I don't think they heard each other at any time, but they came to the same conclusion that Warren County is ahead of the curve when it comes to manufacturing automation and technology. And that's largely thanks to you and your people in Motlow.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I had a dream when I became City Director, you know, this program was available at the middle school. So my niece and nephew went to middle school, they got to experience it. I wanted every seventh and eighth grader in the county to be able to have some type of STEM education because it's so important. It teaches the problem solving, the critical thinking, the teamwork, all those qualities that students need to graduate with to, in order to be successful in the workforce and be successful in post-secondary, whatever post-secondary opportunity they decide. So I told Dr. Mazera, she was here that day, I thanked her, I said, "You have made my dreams come true." Because this is a great opportunity for Warren County students. And I was just so complimentary of her and I appreciate all that they've done for Warren County in helping us get those opportunities and go to apply to our students.
The, you know, long-term goal, as Tracy said, was, you know, we wanted to make sure that we offered the opportunity for all of our county school students, seventh and eighth graders, which we've been able to do with these grants. You know, we just completed the fundraising for our advanced robotics equipment at the high school, so that has been ordered. That was $115,000 that business and industry and the community had put in, largely Todd Herzog and Don Alexander working hard to, along with the community, to raise those funds. So that equipment's been ordered, it should be in before the school year is out. And met briefly with Fred Rasko at Motlow to make sure that we get our curriculum integration right with the mechatronics program, but eventually we'd like that program to be standalone. You know, the next phase of that is to get the simulation units for the elementary schools. So what we hope to do is we can raise the other part of that money is to get the simulation units for the rest of the elementary schools, seventh and eighth grade, that'll be onsite in every elementary school. So they can have the robotics simulators there, and then when they come to the high school, they'll actually have the equipment plus the, the working up, hopefully maybe a little slower, the robotic welders from Erosu.
Yes.
That are going in there, so at the high school as well to be part of our welding program. But they're also the same brand of equipment that the robotics equipment is, so it'll integrate. So, you know, we'll have a seamless robotics, hopefully pathway there at some point in time.
And I was wanting to, if we have any grant money left after some of the stuff we bought, I was wanting to also try to get some of those simulators for the trailer that hook to the computer where the student can program the robots and everything. So I'm going to be reaching out to Todd to help me with that as well. And it's just a great opportunity. I mean, the younger we let the students, or the earlier we let the students learn about these opportunities and make them aware of what's available, it helps the student and it helps our community, so.
I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Chairman, first, I want to go, a 30-second plug. Bobby referenced the local fundraising from individuals and businesses. The Ultimate Oldies Concert is a benefit concert coming up April 22nd, is that right Mark?
That's right.
At the Park Theater. If you've ever seen the Ultimate Oldies, you'll definitely want to come back. But all the profits from that program go to help support the mechatronics and advanced robotics equipment acquisition. That's what that's all about. And if you go, you may be among the first to be able to take seats in the balcony because the city may be finishing up the balcony seating just in time for the Ultimate Oldies. So if you want to do that.
More ticket space.
Yeah, that's right, more tickets. You got your tickets at the Chamber of Commerce.
Or you can buy them for me, I need to sell some.
Yeah, I'll probably be uploading the tickets too. April 22nd.
Our next items are 90% reading go.
I don't have a whole lot to share today, but I do have some good news. Last night I received word that our Read to Be Ready Summer Program Grant was determined to be a high potential proposal, but that we do need to make a few revisions based on their recommendations, and if we do that, then we're likely to be granted. And if you'll remember, that grant proposal is to provide summer programming for, I believe it's five weeks this summer. It's either four or five weeks, actually it's 24 days is what it is, for 45 students that will come from Hickory Creek, Bobby Ray, and West. So we're very excited about having good news for that, and we'll resubmit based on their recommendations before next Friday. And when we hear what the results are from that, I'll let you know. The only other thing that I wanted to share today is to give you all a flyer about our meeting that we will hold this May, May 15th, for parents of upcoming kindergarten students. This is the first time we've developed this meeting. And the idea is that we'll have all the information that parents might be curious about as their little ones get ready to enter kindergarten. We will have their screening results, our screening, pre-teen kindergarten screening is next week, so we'll have those results that we can share with parents. We'll also share with them some information about kindergarten readiness targets that they should be looking for in those results and what to do if their child has not reached those targets yet. So kind of engaging our parents to interact with their students, their child over the summer, getting ready for kindergarten readiness. We'll also have some other community organizations there I've already spoken to, I think it's the Girl Scouts and they'll be there, I'll reach out to the Boy Scouts. I want to reach out to some of our other organizations that serve children to see if they would like to have a presence. And we'll have some giveaways and hopefully it will be something that will help our parents and our children be more prepared for kindergarten. So please help us spread the word.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is our elementary basketball proposal. Todd is here, I think everybody has a copy of that proposal, so I'll turn it over to him if you've got anything that you need to say or any questions that need to be asked, I think. Does everybody, does anybody have anything that they'd like to ask about that proposal?
Well, you did come out with a second proposal, did you not, just recently after your first meeting with the coaches?
Concerning seventh and eighth or sixth?
Well, the packet was all together, but I think it concerns seventh and eighth, did it not?
That proposal was voted on as it was presented and approved as it was presented by the coaches and principals, so.
So what you have in your packet is the go.
Okay.
Any questions?
I like when we talk about it, we looked at, and then I asked Todd and Bobby to send all, every board member a copy of it before they were brought here, so everyone would be, and had the opportunity to take a look at it. After we'd known it several times, and then after the principals and coaches approved it, then I felt, I told them, I felt like it needed to go ahead and put on the agenda so they can move forward with it.
Todd, do you care to just kind of give us a quick update?
Sure. There's actually two proposals, but the first is the seventh and eighth grade proposal. And essentially, that program is going to remain unchanged in terms of the season, how it's laid out, how it's set up. It will start a little earlier than it has in the past. On about, on or about October 1st is when it will begin. We're going to ensure that the middle school fall programs are complete prior to beginning the season in full. And we'll probably start the actual season after fall break. Actually, the Thursday following fall break, so it gives them probably half a week to kind of get prepared part of, after the preseason tournament. When that season is complete, all seventh, or, we set seventh and eighth graders, but it's designed for primarily rising ninth graders, current eighth graders, if they are interested in playing in a collective team. We'll have a, we'll have a tryout, and those two teams, the girls and boys teams, will play current CTC programs, other elementary schools that bore us. As a matter of fact, we've already had at least six other schools that surround us, two in Coffee County, one in DeKalb, and I think there was a school in Cookville that's already said that they would be interested in scheduling games. I thought process was probably 10 games this first year, see how it goes. They'll play in December and January and be through by the end of January. And if they want to play in a tournament of some sort, another James T. Hale in North Fordsborough is an option, that would be available to them. But it just gives those seventh and eighth graders an opportunity to play together as a unit prior to arriving at the high school. That's our goal. We will, we will be recruiting your services on trying to find a coach. I think what we'd like to do, much like the other programs where we hire a coach, is have a committee, rather have, you know, a board member, a couple principals we think, our high school coaches we think should be available, or part of that committee, and then myself, and just go through the traditional application process like we would for any other position, and make a decision from that recommendation. The second proposal is for the sixth grade and under. There were, there were two proposals there, and the schools voted among those two proposals. The proposal that was finally agreed upon, one of the concerns that was raised that one of our board meetings last year is that we had so many teams in our sixth grade and under, they played so many games, it was just, it was overloaded really for that age, and they were just sometimes playing three games a week, which is way too many for that age. So the proposal that was passed is going to randomly divide our sixth grade and under division into two districts. And we're going to have a, we'll just essentially pull numbers. So District A, District B, they'll play each other within their district twice, which gives them eight games. And then if they want to play cross-divisional or cross-district games, they will be able to without having any bearing on their district standings at season's end when we start our tournament. So it cuts down on the number of games, which will affect revenue just a bit, but they will have some opportunities to play additional games with some of the extra, the opposing district to pick up a game or two for that. So I think that's going to be a good plan, and I'm not sure what Monty's thoughts are on that, but I know 18 games was way too many last year for sixth graders and under, so we're hopefully finding the right number for those kids. Anyway, I appreciate, last year, I know this was something we tried to present, and, you know, for whatever reason, I think miscommunication was part of the problem, but this year I think we did it the right way with you guys' recommendations, and we appear to have a good product, or a good, two good proposals to look forward with. But I'd be happy to kind of elaborate on anything or answer any other questions that you might have.
Awesome. Ms. Ellis is here, if you have a thought you'd like to contribute to that.
Last year was Bobby Ray's first year, of course, incoming and where we had had the training week before. So it was such a big change from, we were only playing Hickory Creek and West twice, to then a full-blown season. Of course, that revenue was really nice, so, you know, we went through a couple of different, Todd was very gracious in kind of taking our ideas. You know, one of the ideas was cutting us back really drastically and almost to what we had before, which I was not in favor of. So I feel like this is probably a really good compromise with keeping us in that loop with the other schools and then giving them the opportunity to, if they want to play along, I know we just said that we're going to have some winners at Bobby Ray's, so everybody needs to get ready.
Really? Sounds like, I think they got the buckets worked out, Mr. Bennett.
Well, I think so. We asked Mr. Bennett to be, we've met at least on two occasions, and ask him to kind of review the proposal and then give us some feedback and then review the proposal again and try to work it, you know, we'd get a lot of feedback before we brought it to the board, so.
I do have one question. When two or three elementary schools generally bring fifth and sixth grade students up to play seventh and eighth, with the season sort of being reversed, how, have you all thought about how that will affect, and would it be okay to bring those students up?
Yes, there's not a, there's not a game.
There's no limit anymore?
Right. But we have asked and we've discussed this on more than one occasion, that, that coaches...
Discretion.
Yeah, be smart.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, let them know. I mean, when, don't, don't, I mean, because if you ask a younger child to play, they're going to be honored to play and they're going to try to play, but you've got to be smart and not just, you know, give them a burnout. And that was one of our big concerns, but I think it's going to be fine.
There were issues with that too, kind of the other direction. I know Rachel had the issue with trying to actually have enough with the team and going from all grade levels, and then you have us, West, and Hickory Creek, who sometimes are having to pull those third graders, and then they're playing a sixth grader.
Right.
So it did kind of all wash out, I guess. As long as, I think the coaches are respectful that they're just kids and... As long as, I think the coaches are respectful that they're just kids and a lot of everybody gets their own just learning.
I think we need to approve the proposal. Everybody's good with that.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposal for the 2017, 2018 elementary basketball?
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried to approve the 2017, 2018 elementary basketball proposal. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Appreciate that, Todd. Appreciate you being here and working that out. Our next item is just an update on our strategic plan. Most of, I think all of the committees now have pretty much completed their work on the strategic plan. We're just putting the fine tuning on it and making it look good. Nina's helping us out with that. So we should be bringing it to the board in April for approval. And we've already kind of started a little bit of work on some of that, but it's come along very nicely and I think we've got a good plan for the next five years. So appreciate all the folks that've worked on that, committee members and board, but we will bring that to you in April and get that in the board packet. Next item kind of goes along with that, which is the model teacher leader job description. This is kind of multifaceted. Autumn has been working with Betty Wood and Jimmy Walker and...
Mindy Gibbs.
Mindy Gibbs. On, with the state on a teacher leader model. The state kind of produced a teacher leader model a couple of years ago and then we were asked to come aboard this year. So along with that work and in our strategic plan, in the area that I was chairing, we looked at some coaching opportunities. So this job description is kind of a multifaceted job description. It's one where our teachers would mentor younger teachers, would have higher performing teachers mentor younger lower performing teachers. And we wanted these folks to continue to stay in the classroom. So we've got to talk to our principals about that. That's going to be a discussion point at the principal's meeting tomorrow. And again, this is pending funding. This is not a full-time position. It would be a stipend provided to a teacher if we can make that work. But we wanted to go ahead and bring the job description to you, have it ready, have it approved if we're, you know, if we are able to fund it through differentiated pay or in some other respects, then, you know, we would have that ready to go for the next year. But like I said, now, it is, that's what it's designed to be. So if you've got any questions, I'll answer that. It would just be approved if we need it.
I mean, we know with some of these responsibilities and things, do we not already have, I mean, that the teachers are supposed to be held accountable? And do we really, I guess my question is, need this one person to be the leader? Aren't we already supposed to be doing this? And is there not someone already in place doing some of these same things as far as building the teachers' skills and things?
Well, we do have instructional coordinators that work with teachers. You know, they are able to coach to an extent, but they also do a lot of other things as well, like testing coordinators. You know, some administrative duties, things of that type. You know, what, and that's a full-time position. What these people would be doing, we felt like it would be important if a third grade teacher or a high school math teacher is needing, you know, assistance, which they do get assistance from the people in their department. This would be that teacher who's getting paid a stipend to work specifically with that lower performing or mentor that teacher. We do have some principal mentors that work that way. We did do teacher mentors a couple of years ago, but it was an after-school thing and didn't really get what we wanted to get out of it. So, you know, the vision is that we've got a, say, a third grade teacher that's team teaching with another teacher, but part of the day they're able to help other teachers in the building that are in grades K through three, not just that grade level. And they can speak the same language because they're doing the same job. And it would be, like I said, a stipend position. So yes, there are some that do that, but no, not to the detail that we would be looking for for that.
So this would mean we are going to hire somebody, not get somebody already existing?
No, we would be getting somebody already existing. It would be a current teacher, like if there was a third grade teacher at Morrison and part of the day they would be teaching their class, but the other part of the day they would be working with teachers in that building.
And we're just responsible for a stipend?
Stipend, yes. So it might be, you know, $3,500, it might be $2,000, it might be whatever we can afford to pay for doing that and we haven't worked that part out yet. So no, it's not a $45,000 position. It's an extra duty that we would probably pay out in differentiated pay to do the extra work, much like a coaching stipend.
For these people, would they be, they're just a mentor and advising on what they either, the pluses or the minuses are in reference to, reference to the subject area that they're involved with?
Right.
Now, will this person, they won't be evaluating those teachers, correct?
No.
Because I didn't feel like that they need to be put in that type of predicament.
No. Administrators, instructional coordinators would do that. These people are not designed to do that. They're designed to just be instructional mentors as a model teacher, high performing teachers that are working with lower performing teachers as mentors.
So right now, you would be looking at an estimated, how many personnel would be involved?
Well, the way we've got in the strategic plan, it would be K through three right now and high school, English and Math.
So you're talking about three, three teachers per school in K through three?
Uh, no.
Or one per K through three in each school?
Right.
Plus one at high school and Math?
Right.
Right now?
Right now. Yeah, and then our vision would be to go to four, six. After that, we'd go three, five and then four, three, five and six, eight. Three, three, five and six, eight. Yeah. In the next two years.
If I understand it correctly, this is, this is professional development, but on a more individualized intensive...
It's professional development by using our best people to help our people.
It's a transfer of best practices.
Exactly.
The top achievers to help everybody else.
And right now, those people, you know, if they're, if they're a level five teacher and they're teaching full-time and they don't have the time to mentor that person, it's after hours, it's, you know, they don't have time to leave their classroom to go and watch that teacher teach and then give them feedback. You know, so that's kind of what we're looking at. And, you know, it's not a, like I said, it's not a new position, it's not a brand-new teacher, it's taking the people that we have and stipending them to help mentor other teachers and that's the vision.
Sounds like everything we can do to help.
Right. Well, and it is, and like I said, it is pending funding. You know, if we don't get the funding, it doesn't happen, you know? But the job description would be there if we need it. And, you know, we can use the teacher job description and we had a job description for teacher mentor, but it didn't go into the depth that we wanted this to go into. It didn't have the competencies, it didn't have the, you know, the professional learning, the things that are in there that we wanted to go into.
That's, I mean, I know it's pending funding, but I wouldn't want to put us in a predicament that, you know, that we had to fund this, we'd have to get rid of some personnel that we already have.
No, no, no.
You know, and make classroom size larger, you know?
Yeah. Well, and see, that could be, you know, if, that's one of the things that we like to work out with the principals is if that teacher was going to be released, you know, part of the day, there might have to be some team teaching where there was an increased class size to be able to release them to go during the day. But, you know, we would have to see how that worked in the schools. And that's where we need to talk with the principals about that. Because they would have, when they're released to go do that, then those students would have to be in related arts classes or they'd have to be somewhere else because then we wouldn't meet class size pressures. So, you know, like I said, it's a vision, it's something that, you know, as we talked through with our committee, that they felt like that, you know, we maybe are not taking advantage of the good people that we have to be able to mentor those lower performing new teachers. So, you know, instead of sending them out for professional development, let's use the people that we have to do that and, you know, pay them a little bit, you know, be able to do that, much like a coaching stipend.
I guess my next question is, so when these people are selected or at each school, then if you have more than, that's going to say that you have, just you decide, you got three teachers that are capable of doing this, then is, are there going to be a process that they're going to be selected by?
Yeah, there's, we've got an application process that they would all have the same, you know, opportunity to do that. And, you know...
I'm just trying to look at the knowledge.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the willingness, you know, we want people that would be willing, you know, to do that and some that may not be willing to do that. Like I said, it's not going to replace anybody, it's not a new position, you know, it's not something that we've talked over with our principals in depth with yet, but it's, you know, that's, we've got a principal's meeting tomorrow and we're going to get feedback. I have talked to Mr. Mansfield just to kind of let him know and he said that a lot of principals have questions and that's why we're going to talk about it tomorrow. But it's in no form or fashion, you know, set, locked in, ready to go yet, so.
Well, since we're just looking at the job description proposal and no commitments at this point.
No, no.
I want to move, Madam Chairman, that we adopt the model teacher leader job description as proposed.
I have a motion to, wait, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the model teacher leader position, just the description until we get more information or until we know that we do have the funds to fund this position. Okay, any discussions?
Well, they would have to, you know, and what we would do before we get to that point, it would come back to the board. You know, the stipends would have to be in the stipend schedule, so the board would have to approve that. So, you know, there would be nothing done for board approval. This is just the job description. It would go within our job descriptions. If, you know, we can fund it, we can use it, then we've got the job description there. If we can't fund it, we can't use it, then it's still there for when we can't.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and it is passed for the model teacher leader description, only the description at this point.
Thank you for that. After-school music program, we have, we started Tuesday. We have 20-plus participants who are from various schools in the county that are taking part in that. We did get our guitars donated from a grant program and we've applied for a grant through the bank. Hadn't heard back on that yet to continue that long-term. So Mr. Collier and Ms. Duke have started that program and it's up and running. So we got, that's a good thing. So we got canceled today because of the weather, but, you know, it'll be every Tuesday, Thursday from now till, from Tuesday till the end of school and then next year we'll go from there.
Have you had any issues with getting students to?
No, we sent out all the principals notice if anybody needed transportation to let us know that we would give the bus service and arrange that. Nobody contacted us, so parents, I guess, are getting them there and getting them picked up, so.
And do we have them from all the elementary schools in the county?
Uh, we had about, when we did the survey, we had about 60 that showed interest, I think, from all elementarys. So I don't have the roster of who, but, you know, I would assume that we've gone for all over. Yeah, yeah, so I was pleased. I was really pleased with that, so.
Grant for the guitars, that's from the Smith.
No, this is, it's from, Little Kids Rock is the grant program. Ms. Duke taught in Metro Nashville and she was acquainted with the program. So, you know, they got, they, we had like 20 some odd guitars. Teachers were provided a day of in-service. There was some percussion instruments, things of that type. And we, you know, commit to the program for like a three-year term and then the grant would, you know, pay whatever we would need to pay, you know, going forward with that. So if we needed, you know, to, it's not correct, but fix any other equipment or buy any strings for the guitars or, you know, things of that type, so. So I think that's a good thing.
Could have a little guitar on some.
Well, we could. Might very well do it. Next item is for the ENA Internet Access Proposal. And this is something that comes through every year that we have to approve. Back a year ago and many years before that, about, well, it was five years, every five years, we engage in a consortium of hundreds of school districts across the state that bid internet service that we can get reimbursed for through E-Rate. It's a 90% reimbursement. So what we get is the cost of the internet access, if we paid it straight out, would be 39, $390,000 plus. With E-Rate funds, we get a 90% discount, so we're ending up paying $41,000 for the internet access through ENA, through the consortium of E-Rate funds. So every year, we have to have this approved to go off of that process. So we have financial management approved it a week ago and we just need the board to approve that, the use of that contract, which like I said, we've done it ever since I've been here. But every five years, they rebid. So this is the second year of the rebid contract. So I'll try to answer any questions about that, but that's a huge, huge savings. And, you know, ENA is the provider and, you know, I can, we've got the contract, obviously it's a pretty thick document that you're welcome to take a look at, but Katrina's recommended this, it works well. We get higher speed than, you know, we need to keep our internet services running, so I just recommend that we continue to purchase our internet service off the ENA contract. Just need that approval.
Okay. I just noticed it says something about 100% of the cost. Is that something different than you said about 90%?
Uh, let's see.
I just saw something maybe cover 100% of the cost for delivered services.
Let's see, where is that at?
The contract, I assume this, it says intent to purchase internet access services.
Right.
And the last paragraph, it says something about approved due to an accurate certification, something about maybe cover 100% of the cost delivered services.
Oh, if they have to recover the cost of delivered services, yeah. So if they're, if they can't deliver the services, then they reimburse us 100% of our cost.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the use of the contract through the ENA to reimburse us 90% of the internet access services?
Madam Chairman, I'm happy to move for adoption and approval of the ENA contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries for us to accept the use of the contract for 90% reimbursement through the ENA Internet Access Services.
We, every year from this point, we've got a process in place now so that we'll bring it in January and then the county will approve it, you know, right after the board approves it and we'll do that for the life of the contract. And then when they rebid it, we'll have to go through it again, so. So appreciate that. Just two other items under other... Um, just two other items under other business. Uh, one, we just got completed, um, just here recently. This is a textbook adoption for the, uh, for this year. And CTE is the adoption, uh, group for this year. Tracy and her teachers have reviewed the, the textbooks and, and Tracy, you might wanna talk a little bit about it. I think we're kinda limited on, anyway, what we can purchase.
Yes, it was a very limited list. Um, the teachers are in the process of reviewing, we're getting samples pretty much every two weeks. I'm delivering it to the teachers and Mr. Pierce, Tom and Stan wanted me to, uh, send that to you all tonight, so.
So.
Go ahead, I'm talking.
It'd be just a blanket, you know, blanket adoption. These are the things that what you have is the items that are on the state-approved list for textbooks for CTE. So, you can see by subject there, it's kinda limited as to which companies can approve or have textbooks that are approved. If, uh, if the, um, a teacher comes up, for instance, and says, "Well, I don't wanna use one of these state-approved materials, uh, I've got other materials I wanna approve", then there is an off, uh, adoption process, which they would have to supply what they want to, uh, use. They'd have to come to the board for approval, they'd have to go to the state for approval before they could use it. So, um, you know, these are bid, the things that are on the approved list are bid through the state. Uh, so, um, you know, like I said, you know, the blanket adoption would be, you know, just the things that we have right here. And, uh, you know, there's a, like I said, there's not very many choices per subject.
Uh, the subject, the career clusters are agriculture, health, science, and we have our architecture and construction and our transportation, distribution and logistics. That's the career clusters up for adoption.
And then on the front page there, it lists the, uh, contract steps, uh, that if we, any teacher decided they didn't wanna use that, that it would have to go through approval of the board to do that. Because these have been vetted by the textbook commission, they've been bid and they're approved, you know, through the state.
Okay.
So, what we just need to do is, you know, have the board approve the blanket adoption for the CTE materials. Like I said, they're, they're state-approved, they're board, you know, adopted by the state, you know, state textbook commission and bid through them. So, we're just purchasing off their list, that's what we need.
Do I have a motion to adopt the blanket adoption of the CTE materials?
So, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion carries was to adopt the blanket adoption of CTE materials.
Madam Chairperson, I, I didn't wanna raise this question, but we need to go ahead and get this adopted. Uh, but let me just, very briefly, Bobby, uh, when I look at these prices, uh, the, the bottom end of the range is sixty dollars, and then it goes up, we can have some of these in here for a hundred and twenty-two dollars, a hundred and twenty-four dollars, a hundred and one. How, how are we moving, I guess, as a system and maybe as a state toward electronic, uh, the ebook text?
Well, and that's, that's what those are, the higher-priced items are, are, uh, online access for six years.
Okay.
The adoption process is run six years, so you pay that hundred-and-twenty-four-dollar price, you get six-year access. Or, you know, if you're going to the student text, it's eighty-two dollars, then that's six years of the textbook that you're gonna use. So, it just depends on, you know, the capabilities of the program for whether they can use the online access or not, uh, for the program, so.
So, you mean, you got a physical text along with the Internet access?
No, you'd be one or the other.
Yeah.
One or the other. So, a lot of the times with the textbooks, that, uh, the physical textbooks, they give you, like, they used to give you a CD that you had online access with the CD, but now they've moved everything, I think I'm right, to more, um, subscription-based. So, really, you're buying a subscription if you buy the six-year access.
I guess the one other thing I'd say, if the price for Internet access for the electronic version is the same as it is for the hardbound traditional book, now, I'm, I'm just trying to find the cost savings.
Sure.
And going over to the ebooks.
Yeah, and, and that's good if the student's got the electronic means to have access to. You know, if they, if, for our freshmen and sophomores who have a Chromebook, then they'll have access if they've got Internet access at home. If they don't have a device, then they don't have access. So, that's the cost, that's the, you know, I, I think of, you know, the next two years, you know, we'll be probably in a better position to go that route. But we can, we've done that some already with eighth graders and ninth graders. But, uh, you know, we still have to, uh, sign off every year that every student has access to textbook and materials. So, that's, that's kinda the trade-off, yeah, is the technology. But when everybody from eighth grade, twelfth grade has Chromebook, then we can purchase the hundred-and-twenty-four version for six years, because we've supplied them the opportunity to have access to.
Okay, that more or less answers the question.
Thank you. So, if we wanna allocate a lot more money, yeah, we can do that.
Well, I, I'm working to save some money.
Well, I know. Well, the saving of the money comes on the back end of having the device to save the money.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Yeah, so.
You gotta make the investment first.
That's right. If we, we spend about two, two-hundred-thousand dollars on Chromebooks each year, and I've done that for, you know, the last couple of years, then, you know, we can save money on the back end, so. Yeah, nothing's for free anymore in the whole thing. Uh, last item is, uh, Mr. Zekman was here at our pre-K advisory council meeting, um, and we are in the midst of our application process. And, uh, we need a letter from the board signed by the chairman just to go with our packet, and Ms. Turner is in the midst of pulling all of that together. So, uh, we pulled together a letter, uh, from the board, so if the board's inclined to, uh, approve that tonight, then we can allow the chairman to sign off on that, that we're supporting our pre-K program, and that's our normal local match that we have to match for the, uh, students that we have in pre-K. And I think the budget figure we get from the state, can you remember that off the menu? Six hundred and something?
The state portion is, I believe, six-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was. And then we have to play the hundred-and-twenty-eight match, which most of that match is in kind, because it's, we can account use of the buildings, like tris, D, phone, you know, Internet access, things of that type. So, a lot of that's in kind, the way to show that. And, uh, that's the, you know, that's the way the program's been funded for, uh, how many years we've had it started when I was in.
At least five.
Yeah, yeah, more than five, because I was wanting world's first grant, so, uh, it's been, been a long time. So, if, if, if you're in agreement as a board with this, uh, letter and chairman's in agreement, then if we're willing to approve that, we'll.
Well, I, I'll, I'll move that the board, uh, approve this letter and call on the chairperson to sign it. Madam Chairman?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion carries for me to sign this letter approving the voluntary pre-K program application.
I think that's, that's it for operations.
Okay, um, we have anything on the curriculum and achievement?
No reports.
Okay, then we are ready for the facilities and resources committee. And, uh, Ms. Leonard Blair is down here, so Ms. Tatum will be, be behind her.
Okay, we had several items, uh, committee, and first item was, uh, Mr. Cox and Donnie Caldwell from Maintenance had a general conversation about the, um, the property lines, and they just wanted to square the property at West Elementary, and it was just discussed about our deeds. So, they got into a, uh, they researched the deeds and found that West Elementary and Warren County Middle School were deeded to our county Warren County Commission. Um, in nineteen-sixty-nine, no one was aware, and at this point, there's no action to be taken. Um, all other properties do belong to the Warren County Board of Education, so we're not gonna move forward at this time, just take that and have a general discussion, probably with our commission as well.
They'll just, you know, work through their process, the county attorney, and then we'll have to react from that point.
Okay, and, uh, no vote came out of that. Um, second, tonight, we had a packet provided to us by Mr. Cox. Um, it's a four-page summary of budget items and salary increases and budget project funding, so, um, all board members have that, so if anybody's interested in that, that's always, um, anyone can ask about that. Then number three on our items was Urban College Pavilion. The PTO had raised enough money to be able to provide a pavilion, twenty-four by twenty-four, metal roofing with six-by-six posts. Um, Watson Metals was awarded the, um, bid at five-thousand-one-eighty-nine-eighty-five. Now, we did have a voting committee and that was, um, that was approved.
So, we need to vote, have a vote in here?
Yeah, we have to vote in here.
Okay, now, show your finger, I'll let you finger the rest of it. Okay, next item was, um, opened some concrete testing at Warren County Middle School, um, reported by Upland Design. They had no surprises, they were confirming that there had been some concrete deterioration. Upland Design will come back in April with, um, how to proceed. Uh, next item, at Urban College, there have been some spots formed on the gym wall, and General Shell, it's my understanding, is gonna take care of this. Um, and Upland Design seems to think that because of the gym being built during cold weather months and during wet months, that this is causing the spotting to form on the gym wall. Uh, we've also had some minor, uh, roof leaks and that will be repaired, and also there's some lighting that's not functioning, but all items will be repaired. Um, the next item, um, at the high school, the athletic building, Upland Design reported that the grass didn't go as well as they wished that it had due to the dry weather, and Upland Design will address this and take care of that. Um, also, at Bobby Ray and Urban College, the lockers have yet, have started to be repainted, and they've had some issues with that, but those will be repaired, um, and addressed. And Bobby Ray has had new backboards and rims, uh, been installed in their gym in the last month. And the last two items of business, um, we just want to say how pleased we are, the Warren County Board of Education, that the turnout that we had for the recent school visits for Bobby Ray, West Elementary and Warren County Middle School, we had a great turnout from commissioners, parents, teachers, staff and some students as well. So, we're just thankful that we had such a big turnout. And the last item, um, we will have another school visit at Eastside on Monday, April the third, at five-thirty, and all are welcome to attend. And that's it.
Okay, so out of the committee, um, I need a motion, uh, the, uh, Urban College Pavilion, twenty-four by twenty-four, for five-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents was raised by their PTO and, uh, has been paid for, but I need a motion to, uh, go ahead and approve Watson's Metals LLC to build the pavilion. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries, uh, the pavilion at Urban College, five-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-eighty-five, paid from the PTO, will be, uh, constructed by Watson Metals LLC. Are there any other businesses that we need to discuss or report?
I don't think so.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved and second that the meeting, uh, be adjourned, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you talk about education.
When you are talking about education, you are talking about me.
You are talking about me.
You are talking about me.
When you talk about public education.
You are not talking about a faceless institution.
I am the face of education.
I am the face of education.
I may not understand educational budgets.
Or the politics behind decisions.
But the result will shape my education.
It will allow me to follow my dreams.
It will allow me to follow my dreams.
We are not finished.
We are not finished.
We are not finished.
I may not understand everything that's going on.
Or the conversations that are taking place.
But I'm working hard.
But I am working hard.
But I am working hard.
I am succeeding.
I am growing.
I am learning.
Because of you, I can make a difference.
Because of you, I can make a difference.
But you can't let me fall behind.
You can't let me fail.
You can't let me fail.
You can't let me fail.
I need your help to succeed.
Will you stand up for me?
Will you stand up for me?
Will you stand up for me?
We should advocate for public education because our students need our voices. They need us to stand for what's right, they need us to stand for them. We want our children to be prepared for their futures. And so, in order for them to do that, it's our job to be able to stand there and advocate for them.
Back years ago, we talked about every student having individualized education plan. You see that in action now. We're not teaching to the middle anymore, we're working individually with students to make sure that every student has the best opportunity to succeed.
We've increased our technology tremendously over, uh, the past three to four years. Our kids are writing more, they're talking more, um, they're debating more in the classrooms. So, when we look at our district, when we look at our state, um, our students are performing better than they were, uh, before the changes were implemented. And the track that we're going on now with our education reform, we are starting to see a, a major difference in the way kids were four to five years ago versus now.
I see, um, students justifying their thinking and critiquing the reasoning of others, and this is all because we've moved to higher standards. It's not just that we're going through a checklist of things that they've got to study, but students are learning content that's relevant to their everyday lives, and they're really thinking about content in new ways. Every time I leave the state, people are talking about what's happening in Tennessee. People all over the country are watching us. I love that, that principals and administrators are in classrooms all the time, and they are really focused on being instructional leaders instead of just building managers. The changes that we have made in education so far are really showing up in student achievement. As long as we are seeing growth in students, then we should definitely stay on track with reforms.
You know, all the reforms together collectively has helped move us in the direction that we wanna go, and we've done it in our county with very limited resources. You know, a student doesn't have another chance at the third or the fourth grade. We see the reforms are working, we just have to continue to, to stay the course and, and keep improving upon the good work that we're already doing.
Uh, having a strong public education system really defines how successful that community is. I think we need to continue to focus on our role within public education, um, directly within the classroom and, and down to each student.
As board members, it's our responsibility to advocate for our students so that they have the best educational opportunities afforded to them in public schools.
Everyone within a community should stand up for public education, because that's really the backbone, uh, of America.
Stand up for public schools because our students need our voices, they need us to stand for improvements in student achievement, they need us to stand for them.
I have dreams for the future.
I have dreams for the future.
I have dreams for the future.
These dreams require education.
They require an education that won't fail me.
The stakes are high.
From teachers.
To administrators.
To school board members.
To the community.
We all have a role to play.
So don't leave me behind when I'm almost there.
Stand up for public schools.
Stand up for public schools.
And let your voice be heard.
Stand up for me.
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 The reason we're having so many fires this year is drought. The entire state is under a drought watch. The drought seems to get worse as you move from northwest Tennessee to southeast Tennessee. The leaves, the branches, the trees are very, very dry at this time and that's primarily the reason we're having so many fires. We have great partners and volunteer fire departments. They are working constantly to assist us with forest fires and grass fires. But even then, we get overcome with so many fires that we simply can't take care of all of them. So at that point, we call on the compact that we are a part of in the southeast US. And any, any state within the compact can call on other state resources when they have more fire than they can handle in-house. Sometimes we have to use air support that comes in the form of helicopters or air tankers. And we don't have those in our, in our fleet of equipment. So we rely on the Tennessee National Guard to provide helicopters for us for dropping water. And we also rely on our partner, the US Forest Service, to provide helicopters as well as air tankers. Typically, that comes when lives are threatened. Sometimes firefighters can be trapped in an area and if we have air support available to us that can respond quickly, we will call on that air support for the safety of the firefighters. Another reason we would use air support is to protect homes. When they are threatened and we simply can't stop the fire by other means, we will bring in air support to, to put down, again, water or retardant to keep the fire from reaching homes.
It's so important to get vaccinations and to protect yourself and to think ahead as to the ramifications without them.
In 2008, my daughter, a young adult at that time, was diagnosed having common variable immunodeficiency, which affects the immune system. And she essentially can't fight off an everyday infection. The everyday cold can actually cause her to have to have a hospitalization. The vaccination schedule, of course, is something that you almost, you have to adhere to it. I mean, you have to if you want to have healthy children that grow up in today's society exposed to so many things and, and to protect your extended family as well. Please make sure that you vaccinate your children. Find out what the schedule is, when the shots are needed, and how often they're needed. It is such an important thing that we can do for our children.
It's absolutely out of this world class because we've got an environment that low earth orbit gives us access to that has conditions both internal in the microgravity environment and external in terms of the access to the viewpoint, the radiation, the atomic oxygen that you just can't get in any laboratory here on Earth. We're really hoping that all of these investigators who come on board not only learn what they were hoping to learn, but make these wonderful discoveries along the way. Last year, Scott Smith in the nutrition study published some of our first data on genetic analysis of our astronauts in space. And this analysis is really the first use of genetic data onboard the space station. It's an amazing paper and it's great and it's related to the vision loss problem, which is one of our top-tier issues that we have. We're in this new era of genetic data collection. So a number of these projects, like the biomolecule sequencer, are responses to how do we make it easier to get COTS payloads, consumer off-the-shelf payloads, into the space station and operating on space station? The end result of that is we get to these next generation devices earlier and we are able to get the data back to the ground quicker for the experimenters to verify and validate their hypothesis and then come up with that next follow-on investigation that may really hold promise for the future.
In the fall of 2013, a new career in technical education course was started at Warren County High School. In cooperation with Motlow State Community College, Mechatronics was brought to WCHS. But what is Mechatronics?
It's a discovery-based method of learning for electronics, pneumatics, hydraulics, and PLC programming.
What I consider Mechatronics is the technology of how to make things. It's automated manufacturing, applied physics, and engineering technology.
To sum everything up, it's industrial maintenance.
What I would say Mechatronics is it's a innovative program that we are teaching at Warren County High School to prepare students to enter the workforce with the skills needed by industry in Warren County.
Level 13 is your output address. Remember, your output address is the number that's on the side of it.
This right here?
With a dual-path style curriculum, Mechatronics is a great option for students wishing to go straight into the workforce as well as for students who wish to continue their education at the college level.
The initial four courses is what we consider our Level One certificate program. The initial goal is to successfully pass all four courses so that they can pass the Siemens exam, which they can take up at Motlow. And once they successfully can pass that and they are certified as a, as a Level One maintenance technician. From here, what we encourage them to do if they're, if they're interested and they have the capability for it, is to advance onto our Level Two program, which encompasses not only six core Mechatronics courses that they have to take, but also different electives and other requirements that Motlow requires for an associate's and applied science degree.
I think the neat thing about Mechatronics is that it not only can provide the student the training necessary to go directly into the workforce after graduating high school, but it can also provide the student with the necessary training plus curriculum to learn if they decide they want to continue on. If they wanted to take Mechatronics here at the high school level in the 11th and 12th grade, then if they, that would be the Level One path. Then they could go to Motlow and get an associate's degree at Motlow, which would be the Level Two. And then they could articulate onto MTSU and get the four-year degree at MTSU with a bachelor's of science degree for a Mechatronic engineer.
The Warren County High School Mechatronics program is the only high school program in the mid-state area with onsite Mechatronics equipment.
As CT Director for the Warren County School System, I was, had the opportunity to write a Mechatronics grant. And Warren County School System and Warren County High School were lucky enough to be awarded $295,000 to be able to purchase equipment.
How do we test the outputs? What module, output module?
This opportunity is funded by the Citizens for Progress Scholarship, which is the tuition program that our industries in Warren County contribute to in order to provide students the opportunity to take the classes.
Just the preparation for a career. It's unbelievable. But these kids can go out and basically have a career for life. They don't have to, if they don't want to go to school anymore, they don't have to go to school anymore. You know, they're going to be financially stable if, but, and if they want to go further. And I would say it's for every kid that wants to be an engineer, whether it's industrial, electrical, mechanical, civil, because these are the type, these are the basics of all engineering. And if you just like to know how things work, this is, this is, this is what it's all about.
I just got back with a meeting from the Director of School Bobby Cox and the supervisors of Rosu. And I got things in order, got my application and I've talked to them and they have positions open on their stamping and tool and die area in their factory. And once I graduate here in June, well, once I turn 18 in June, graduate in May with my certificate, they're going to hire me on at 16:25 an hour. We work in either 410s or 312s. So I get four, three days off. And that's kind of where I plan to go, but I'm also going to go into Motlow and getting a Level Two Associate's degree.
If you have ever been interested in working in manufacturing or any kind of engineering field, talk to your guidance counselor.
My name is Raquel Lima. I teach at the Clifton Early Learning Academy. I have been a teacher for seven years. The last four years have been in early childhood. My day is busy. It's definitely a demanding day. Come in, get everything ready to go, prepared for the children. Everything needs to be ready before they come in. There's no wait time. So we need to capitalize on every second we have and keep them engaged. Hi, happy gal, good morning. How are you? I think that's really important to greet the children in the morning and you kind of get engaged for how that child's feeling that day. When we're done with breakfast, we come to the carpet, have a little greeting time where we talk about the new things or anything different in the classroom for the day. Then they go to a small group instruction time. It's about 10 to 15 minutes where we'll work on a particular skill in small groups. The brain grows the fastest between zero and seven and this is a key point in development to get your children ready for school, to become accustomed to a classroom, and to, you know, learn how to be social with their peers. Then the children will transition into work time, which is the biggest part of our day. It's an hour where the children are able to, you know, choose independently what they want to work on in the classroom. I dropped my head on the floor. Woo! Pick it up, pick it up. Put it all back together. I think as adults, we kind of forget the beauty in the little things and being around children, you really get to see that all day long. The misconception is preschool teachers might not even need any training because they're just playing with children all day. The biggest challenge probably is that when the kids come in, they all come in at completely different levels. My children, nine out of the 14, started school in September with English not being their primary language. One thing that we worked really hard on this year is having the children understand that people are different and that's okay. You know, you speak this language and he speaks a different language and that's okay. And we're working on learning English so we can all communicate together. So you can build a rich community when you have all the diversity in your room. So it's not looking at the classroom as a whole and how I'm going to teach all of the children, it's how I'm going to teach each individual child that they need to know. My biggest thing, I'm very passionate about early childhood education. I just wish other people would see the importance of, you know, high-quality preschool and see that we're really laying the foundation for children and their learning for the rest of their lives. Our classroom would not be our classroom and run the way it does without a beta. She's a teacher. We're co-teachers. So I can't even say she's my assistant because we're working together like one person. We're all in the room together so we can have lunch with the children. It's really important to model what conversations happen at mealtime and, you know, appropriate manners at the table. At the end of the day, I try to have all the children on the carpet and I tell them, think in your brain, think about what you did today. What was something that you really enjoyed today? What was something that didn't go so well? What would you want to do differently? And hearing their responses really helps me, you know, reflect on the day as well and see, okay, what can we do differently tomorrow? Goodbye to everyone. Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. My end of the day is making sure that, you know, the learning activities are prepared for the next day and that, again, all the centers are neat and organized and ready for the kids to just come in the next day. What went well today? What am I going to continue to do and what did not go well? And I have to go back and revisit that so my kids can have a better day the next day. Just always making each day better than the day before. I can't even tell you how often that people say, well, you don't look like a farmer. Nobody's ever accused me of being anything but prim and proper. Nobody's ever accused me of being an athlete, you know, anything like that. I'm from Franklin, Tennessee. Born in Nashville, but, you know, raised in Franklin. Was not raised on a farm. I do not have a farming background. I was raised in a neighborhood. Got into farming by marriage. When my husband and I first got married, we both had jobs, but we grew about an acre garden just for us and our family. And that made us the most happy. So I kind of made it my mission to figure out a way that we could do it full-time. So we quit our jobs and sold our car for seeds and became farmers. Like me, this is our greenhouse. This is where we start every single one of our seeds. It was hard. It was really hard. You can't just decide to feed 100 families this year. You know, we had to kind of prepare for that. So it started the first year with us just growing food for, like I said, our friends and our family. Well, this thing, it's covered in mubbit. It pokes a hole in the ground and you sit here and it fills that hole up with water. And then you put the plant in the fresh little water. Our CSA is really cool. It's a little bit different from most of the CSAs that are out there. We call it our farm-ly. All of our pickups are on the farm. We don't do deliveries. It's like, kind of like a buffet line and you fill up your basket with whatever you want for the week. I do feel like women farmers, they're in the minority, but I just think all farmers are in the minority these days. I feel like we definitely need more farmers all the way around. In our area, we have a really neat gathering of women farmers and I really love going to that and getting inspired. It's interesting being a mama and a farmer because it's hard for people, I think, to put me in a box because sometimes I'm a full-time working mom and sometimes I'm a part-time working mom. One of the biggest things about me and most women farmers that I know is you can't box us in. And if you tell me, you know, well, you don't look like a farmer, well, just come out to the farm and watch me work because I can outwork anybody.
Programming on WCS TV is made possible in part by a donation from Security Federal Savings Bank, serving its customers with three convenient Warren County locations. Programming on WCS TV, Channel 180, is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents, Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sekman.